J O J is Vicki Hollisburg from Moore. M L K is Nicole Johnson, and she has taken on the task to be the president of the Northwest Cluster. N A B O is Bertha Robinson. Is Bertha here? H I R E S is Pearl Hunter. D O S T is Anthony Berry. There's a man on the road. E R O P E is Dorothy Ullman. And she can still maybe outside. Now, you do not have to have a child to participate in the PTA. PTA is about anyone who loves children and desires the best for them. But I would love the community to support the Northwest Cluster, as well as your individual PTAs. Because when I'm in meetings, they always ask me how many PTA members do you have in your district? And to some communities, that means the strength and the support that these schools have. So I need Ms. Cole, and Ms. Johnson, and all of you, and Mr. Berry, when they speak, they'll be able to say that we have 100% PTA, and we represent the voices of this community. So I would love to have you there. They would love to have you. If you want to volunteer to one of these ladies and gentlemen. And listen to our meeting. It's very informative. May I have a word? Nice to see you back there. And our councilman, Richard Shalhust, is here. And our school board member. Mike Cover, District 5. Stay in the left and see what you look like now. Dave Blair wanted to extend his apologies because he's been called out of town for business. But we will proceed with the program as printing.
Good evening. I am so pleased with tonight's turnout. That tells me that you, well, we are all concerned about our community and, most importantly, our children. Thank you to the Huntsville City School Board members and distinguished guests for taking time to be here. We appreciate your support. With that said, without further ado, I'd like to introduce our speaker of the night, Dr. Casey Wurdenisky.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. Tonight, what I want to do is touch on some highlights from the past year in terms of key accomplishments that the schools have made and the students have made. And then talk a little bit about the future Huntsville City Schools, and specifically with regard to schools that would lead into Johnson High School and other schools in this part of our town. So first, touching on accomplishments. The system began a digital conversion, which means we're moving from paper to the same sort of technology that folks use in the office, that we use in the business place, and that your children will need to be matched with to earn high-wage positions in industry. Long noted in our country has been a digital divide between folks who had computing technology and access to computers at home, and folks who didn't. Well, we don't need our children to be on the wrong side of that divide. And so Huntsville City School now provides every 3rd grader through 12th grader a laptop. And those laptops have a market value of about $1,600. We didn't pay that for them, but that's what they're worth. And they're connected up to a digital curriculum that now provides immediate feedback. In other words, when your students are working in math, they don't have to wait to turn their paper and wait two days to get a grade to get an answer about, did they know how to approach the material or not? And then if they're done, they get immediate feedback about was this question answered properly or not? And if not, what would the right answer look like, and how would I go about getting that answer? So that's very important. Mathematics, as you can imagine, is equally important for you. And so beginning all the way through 12th grade, we're providing these resources, which the rest of the country is following our lead now. Very shortly, we're going to run with a town of 800,000 students is doing what we're doing. The state of Florida is doing what we're doing. The country of Uruguay is doing what we're doing. Connecticut, Rhode Island, Maine. And with about five years, most of the school system in the country will be headed in this direction. The state of Alabama has already decided that from now on, the key tasks we administer to students in high school will be administered on the computers. So we were in a great position this spring to do that. The rest of the state struggled with it, but our kids finished their testing in about two 45-minute periods for each of the core tests that they had to take. So this curriculum's networked, which means it's always improving. Unlike a paper textbook, which if it's printed with mistakes in it, those mistakes are there for the next seven, 12 years while we keep that book. This curriculum always improves, just like the other stuff you see on the internet, from iTunes to eBay to all the different things we look at on the internet. Well, the other important thing is, it's now aligned, lined up with making sure our kids are ready for college and career. And that's the Common Core, or in Alabama, what we call the Alabama Career and College Ready Standards, that you might have heard about in newspapers and seen a little bit about on TV. Those standards are critical, because at every grade level, 3 through 12, we're now able to measure how are we doing in terms of getting kids ready for their careers and to succeed in college, so they don't have to remediate that first year in college. So all these things are now lined up in Huntsville's, the first major school system in the United States, to be able to totally take advantage of it. Why are we doing it? Well, quite simply, because the world's changed a lot, and the world will continue to change, and it's probably going to change at a faster and faster rate. This graphic shows time on the horizontal axis. So there on the left was 1860, and there on the right is the year 2000. And up and down is the number of new patents that are granted in our country. So you know these guys over at the Arsenal, they're risk creating information, new technologies. And when they do that, they want to protect it, so they write a patent law. Well, patents are really a shorthand way of keeping track of how much new knowledge is created in our country. And you can see that blue line was how much new knowledge was created over the years. And it sort of sloped upward, but it was pretty predictable. Tomorrow looked like today. Yesterday wasn't much different than today. And so the world was very linear. The future looked a lot like the past. And that was true up until about 1980, 1990, and then things changed a lot. The internet came online, and we all began computing. Folks used computers at work, and the amount of knowledge created in our country grew exponentially. And you can see that red line there and the blue lines, all went pretty much vertical. That means the world's changing at a very quick rate now. And we can see that all over the place. You can see the kind of companies that we talked about today. Many of them didn't exist 10 years ago. Who had heard of companies like Google 10 or 15 years ago? Nobody, and yet they're one of the biggest companies in the world today. Companies like Kodak, we knew when we were kids, they don't exist anymore. They're gone. So we have to prepare our kids. They come with them. Good companies, bad companies, companies that come, companies that go. They're going to have the ability to be employed in good paying jobs. Well, education today is in transformation. It's changing from the old reality of the way education used to look to a whole set of new realities. And the old realities were sort of born out of the industrial era, between World War I and World War II, when folks were prepared to work in assembly lines. The Chrysler Ford, Boeing, and these kind of places. And they had a certain set of attributes. The first was, what was the environment you were preparing kids to go into? Well, the old reality prepared kids to go into industrial age, to do things repeatedly, to be able to master facts, when, who, what, where. The focus was learning those same things, the whats, the whens, who did what, when did they do it? The structure was very centralized, so even today, the office building I work in, they call that the central office, because everything's sort of pointed like a pyramid to the top. The world doesn't look like that anymore. The world is all sorts of interconnections between different parts of the community, social networks together. The structure, non-competitive for me. And the learning systems, they were very compartmented, sort of bite-sized. We had 6.8 hours in a day. We had 180 days in a year, and that was a school year. And before we had kindergarten, there was going to be one year through 12 years. Well, now we've added kindergarten, and now Huntsville, we've added pre-K. So kids don't live in little bite-sized pieces, though. They live in a continuous flow. They live in a world that's changing all the time, and it doesn't take a break for summer. It doesn't take a break for spring. It's always changing, and we need to prepare them to be able to do that. So what are we doing about it? We're getting ready for the new reality, which is already here. It's a world of information and concepts, concepts like reinventing life. The folks over at Huntsville's out there are working on the ability to change DNA, to attack diseases by recombining key components of DNA. How will our kids master that? And how will they think about it? Should we do it? Should we do it? There's ethical questions, moral questions, questions of life and the nature of life. We've got to do a lot more than what, who, and when to prepare kids for that. The outcomes, as I just said, they're changing. Not so much the when, the who, and the what. Now it's why and how. How would my business change if this new regulation is put in effect in our family? Why would they want to do that? Why would we change the nature of life? Those are the tough questions we're getting kids ready for now. And we're getting ready for them to figure those out on their own after they leave school. So we've got to give them the skills and the ability to master those sorts of questions while we have them. The structure, very decentralized. And you can see that today. Alabama struggles apparently every year with the question, what should education look like? Last year, the debate was charter schools. This debate's about using public money to fund private schools. Next year, probably to be vouch for it. But education's changing rapidly, and public education has to be ready for that. And then finally, we need to be continuously operating to the benefit of your children. Education doesn't come in bite-sized. It comes when they're ready. It comes with prepared-to-answer questions they're interested in answering. And it should be available all the time, not just when they're in the classroom. So the other parts are, it has to be open. In the old days, schools were closed up and weren't that interested in parents and community coming in. Now we are, and we need the help of parents. It's a partnership. And then finally, personal ones. I guess if I'd asked in this room, how many people have the average child? I might not see a single hand. None of my children are the same. I guess it's none of yours are the same. They're all different. And yet we approach them using that old industrial approach, like we're all coming on the center line. They're all going to take 12 years. They're all going to learn between September and June, and they're all going to learn on the same page on the same day in the same way. Of course, that's ridiculous. So our effort is now to personalize and understand your children better, so we can find out if the kids are excited. What would they like to read? If they were to read this material, would they read it at a higher level? What sort of math would they enjoy? Would they like to see math in a finance format, talking about money? Or would they like to see it in an engineering format, talking about how to build something? That's the things we need to know to make sure your kids are excited about coming to school. So here in Huntsville, when we're implementing all that, there's a set of things we're doing. The state and Huntsville City Schools are implementing our Career and College Ready Standards, which conclude these Common Core standards that people who lead business and who run colleges tell us our kids need to know by the time they leave 12th grade. So that's the first major change. This year, this school system is entirely aligned with the college and career standards and the Common Core. That's a big change. We didn't want to wait four years, because your kids aren't going to be able to wait. They get one shot at a great education. So we put it on our adults to speed up, to adopt these new standards, and prepare your children to be ready for what comes in life. Here, we're focusing now more on growth than achievement. In the old days, if a teacher got a student who was maybe two grade levels behind, or three grade levels behind, they might not want that student in their class, simply because if they're graded on achievement, and that student is not at grade level by the end of that year, they would be marked down. Well, let's think about that. A teacher who can move a student two years in a year is doing heroic work. Why not recognize that? So now we do with a focus on student growth. So we're very interested in how fast are your children growing every year? And we want and require that they grow up one year per year. And our expectation is they'll actually grow faster than that. And so we're changing everything to bring that into the deal and make sure that's the case. We're doing it against a set of external standards. We can pick our own standards, and when we look at when we do use our own standards and how that works out for kids, it's not good. Our own standards are often encapsulated in report cards. Report cards go home to you. You'll see, how your students doing in math and science. But it may not tell you what you need to know about, how will your students fare when they compete globally for a job? And so to take care of that, we're measuring all our kids against external standards, or the same standards we're going to measure against when they go to work. So last year, we looked at report cards across our middle schools, and we found out, it didn't matter what middle school it was. The typical child, the median kids in that class, the middle child, got a B-, Q-, B. When we looked at where they stacked up, though, in terms of their readiness for college and career, against other kids around the country. We had kids earning Bs and B- that were at the 90th percentile. They were doing better than 90% of the kids in the country. And we had kids that were doing better than 17% of the kids in the country. That's not right for the kids, and that's not right for families. We have to be honest about how our children are doing, and so external standards help us do that. And we know our kids can more than match those external standards. But we have to shoot high, and we have to make sure we're aiming at the right things, which are being ready for college and career. The focus, we're very much focused now on college and career readiness. You hear me say that over and over tonight, and that's because it's where we're headed. It's where we're headed, and it's where we're aiming for your children to be prepared to dominate that arena. We're using advanced placement where we can, and so proud to be able to say that this year, Johnson High School is now part of A-plus college ready, which rewards students and teachers. For there are students who are in a 3, 4, or 5 on the AP exams, to help them prepare for that. We're doing other things, like bringing in curriculum in middle school, so that they're prepared for high school AP courses. And then, of course, we're doing assessments. But we're doing it in a new way. The kids take the assessments on their computers. And that's so we can know instantly where are they. We don't need to send out the forms and wait weeks to find out. And so they can know instantly, and so that we don't have to waste a lot of time testing. Many of the tests we give now, the STAR test in particular, takes about 20 minutes, and we know exactly where a student is, so we can begin putting the right resources in place. The structure, it's a little bit of the old, a little bit of the new, and it's going to become less and less of the old and more and more of the overtime. We anticipate it's going to take us about four to six years to complete this transformation from the way we knew education to the way education must be. And in terms of learning systems, we've made a lot of changes. We've brought in pre-K classrooms, so now we have 33 pre-kendigored classrooms across our system. Most of those are funded, in fact, all but two are funded with local money. And so those are there to help make sure children have the skills they need to be ready to be reading by the end of second grade and to be numerating by the end of second grade. The second grade's a key time. That's when they stop learning how to read and start using reading to learn. And we've got to make sure they're ready for that transition. We're going to be doing a lot more project-based learning. So a lot of kids will say, I'll never use this math. Why would I need to know this? Well, if we embedded the projects, they'll understand why. So at Johnson High School, we're bringing projects to either way, which is an engineering curriculum designed to bring together the math and the application in real life. And that ultimately should lead you a pretty good job on the arsenal. And then finally, the digital curriculum. So what kind of results are we seeing so far? Well, typically, discipline problems in schools come from a couple of places, but the most important is, the children aren't engaged, they're disenfranchised, they're not connected to the curriculum, somewhere we've lost them. And so now they're rebelling against school instead of being part of school. Well, the digital curriculum's helping reengage them. We're approaching kids now where they live, in the digital environment. They're all natives to that environment. And when we do that, we see the discipline rates go down. And so this year, we've seen discipline go down by about 45% across the school system. And our principals have told me, what caused me to look at this, was they actually approached me and said, Dr. Wurdenisky, the kids are engaged. The person I had working on discipline at Morrison Elementary School, she's not doing that anymore. Or the person working at M L K on discipline, she's not doing that anymore. They're doing other things. On our buses, we put Wi-Fi on the buses for the longer routes, and we're seeing discipline on those routes go down 75% this year. So if we make education interesting and engaging, the kids will be with us. What kind of results are we seeing in the classroom with regard to student preparation for college and career? Well, we're seeing pretty good results. This picture shows you year-over-year improvements in math, looking at all our elementary schools. So yellow was last year, and this graph shows what percent of students in these schools were at or above grade level. The red bar shows this year at winter. So winter to winter, we see pretty good improvements here, and we seek to build on these and continue this progress.
The children are actively engaged in their learning now, and I can get immediate feedback on their learning, so it's a huge benefit to the classroom.
I find that the technology brings a sense of comfort to the students, because this is who they are. This is what they know.
I love this. I liked it on the back, so I liked it there on my laptop, because I love technology so much.
It's so worth it, because the children are really enjoying them, and I think it's going to enhance their learning even more.
It's so much easier than using textbooks, and it's so much easier than writing some down on paper.
It's really preparing to be lifelong learners and to have those skills necessary, not just educational skills, but career skills and job skills.
In my workplace, all of my boys have laptops. We work remotely. We're able to email and access the internet instantly to find out what we need. And I think it's so important for students now to learn to work that way, because that's the world's now.
The benefits that we're going to receive, not only from this day forward, but for the years that we have following, are really going to enhance our kids' abilities out in the competitive world.
It is with great pleasure and with unanimous agreement that our external review team will recommend to Advance it and to the Advanced International Accreditation Commission that Huntsville City School will be awarded district accreditation for an ensuing term of five years.
So this year, we've managed to become the first all-digital district accredited in Alabama. And we continue to build on that. We do it through strengthening our teaching faculty. And in this case, the focus is really on equity and excellence. When schools, in the old days, schools would hire our teachers. The principal would do the recruiting, the principal would do the interviewing, and the principal ultimately would recommend the hires to the school board, to the superintendent. Well, when I began looking at our schools two years ago, it was fairly apparent that some schools had lots of applicants, and some schools had virtually none. And in those cases where there were very few applicants, a principal might be reluctant not to advance a teacher on the tenure, simply because he or she, the principal, might not get anybody to fill the hole if they didn't keep that teacher on board. Well, that's not a good situation. We need to make sure every school has access to the very best teachers and new talent to come into our schools. So the school system now recruits and hires all teachers for all of our schools. That means sure we're all at a high level of quality, we're all at the same standard of excellence. And then what we do is, we offer those teachers to the school principals, forward at time, for their consideration and selection. So principals now pick from a list that is a list of teachers who are prepared to teach many schools in Huntsville City Schools. In fact, when they get hired out here, we have them agree to a set of affirmations. And key among those are, I believe every student can learn, and I'm willing to work in every school. So with that in mind, we now have 19,500 applicants for our schools, and we're thinking we're not anywhere shy of 200 teachers this year. So that's a pretty good position to be in. Folks want to work in Huntsville City Schools. We also use information to make purposeful assignments to teachers to schools and to classrooms within schools. So this graphic's got a lot going on. But across the horizontal axis, there you've got the elementary schools. And I've kind of highlighted with the little blue arrows, the ones that we feed at Johnson High School in this area. And on the up-down axis, north-south, is how fast are the students growing? Down there below 40 were that red line. Those students in those classrooms, every dot in a classroom, are growing slower than a year and a year. So the longer they're in classrooms like that, the further behind you will get. Well, that's not a good thing for our kids. So first things important is, which classrooms are those? So the superintendent knows. And I've got the list of those classrooms on my desk. And I look at the files of the teachers, and I look at the teacher's data, and I look at the classroom data. The other folks in the school system all now also have those files on their desk. We recommend that the teachers are leading those classrooms for summer learning labs. We're going to review their performance. If their performance hasn't improved, we'll make adjustments, with the idea that every child will be in a classroom where they're getting at least a year and a year, and all likelihood, much more than that. Now, between those two red lines are classrooms where students are getting about a year and a year. And above the top red line are classrooms where students are getting more than a year of education in a year. And so you can see we've got schools like Morris, where there's a whole lot of dots above that red line. We've got a few below that we're working on, and then the orange is in the middle. So Morris is moving its teachers and its classrooms up, so all the students are getting more than a year of education in a year. You can see there's other schools. There were most of the dots above the top red line. That's where it went on all our schools debate, on all our classrooms. Every child needs to be in a high-growth environment. And so we're working diligently to make sure the teachers can deliver high-growth instruction, and then we have high-growth teachers on our classrooms. When we pick teachers, we score them, and we look at 10 different things. We look at the transfers. Did this teacher who wants to teach math start out instructing in a math program and not do very well? And now they've changed to an education program? We're probably not going to hire that individual. Did they start on the math program and do well, and then she switched to teaching? We're probably not going to hire that individual for math. So we want folks where education was not a fallback position. It was the first thing they wanted to do, and they wanted to do it well. And so we look across the colleges we draw teachers from, and we score. And we score the colleges, too, so we know which pond's still fishing, because we want big fish, and we want the biggest ones in our classroom. And so we're working on that as well. Now, we also want equity across our school system, and we want lots of applicants. So I mentioned a moment ago, we have 19,500 applicants to teach in Huntsville City Schools. And when we look at them, their breakout looks as shown on the pie chart on the left. And among the folks we actually hired last year, they look like the pie chart on the right. We hired 259 new teachers, and we have a pretty diverse group of excellent teachers here. Now, diversity is important, because it's the way our country works. We need to be able to work with all sorts of folks, everyone alike. But it's also important, because the district didn't always have a history of diversity. In the 1970s, the courts became involved with Huntsville City Schools and directed that would be treated as two school systems. And so they felt that the system was operated as two systems, where there was not equity for all the folks in the system, and particularly African-American folks. Well, we're headed in a direction of unitary status, because it's the right place to be. We need to treat everybody equally. We need to resource them equally. We need to make sure those schools are equitable and excellent. And so we're on our way to doing that. The graph in the top has all our schools listed across the horizontal axis. And then on the up-down axis, there is what percent of the population in that school is African-American. So what the Department of Justice is interested in, do our schools generally look like to our overall population of teachers? And in Huntsville City Schools, we have about 28% of our teachers are African-American. So it would be odd to go to a school and find out that all the teachers are white or all the teachers are African-American. But indeed, we have situations like that, and that's the two extremes of that chart on the very far left. Those schools, pretty much all they did else there are white. On the right, pretty much all they did else there are African-Americans. Well, we've got to bridge that out, so it's about 30%, plus or minus 15%. So the graph on the bottom shows you where we are today. In two years, we've made a lot of progress, but we've got more progress to make. So we assign teachers purposefully to make sure they're excellent, that there are not grade-level alignments of weak teachers, so that a student would go from a weak 3rd grade to a weak 7th, 4th grade. And we're purposeful with regard to making sure we have equity across our school district and diversity. By way of developing the teachers we already have in Huntsville City Schools, of which many, many, many are excellent, we are providing now summer learning labs. And I think we have about 400 teachers enrolled in our summer learning lab, which will begin when school ends. And the focus of these labs is to improve teaching, to help teachers make that jump from the old way of teaching to the new college and career standardized standards, and use the digital resources our kids have, but maybe not all our adults have. And so we provide, we'll be providing that this summer. And then during the school year, this year, we began providing 30 days of training in our classrooms in every school. So we've now brought professional development into our schools to help our teachers with that career and college ready standard component, as well as the digital business, and helping them learn how to master the digital resources we provide them. Now, to help our kids get ready, while we're getting our teachers ready, we extended pre-K. So the district is now investing about $2 million a year in pre-K, and we have some schools with up to three and four pre-K classrooms in them. These are designed to meet the needs of the community and the students, to make sure those students are ready to move on and be able to go from learning how to read to reading to learn by second grade. With that effort, we're able to, we've added 414 additional students access to pre-K, and this is very high-quality pre-K. The teacher's certified in early childhood education, and in most cases, the A is a certified teacher as well. And I think we have about 18 students in those classrooms. So two adults, 18 students, lots of certified adults that know exactly what they're going to do to help those children get ready for the future of education. And that gives us the ability to provide 60% of our children today access to pre-K who would otherwise be at risk if we didn't.
Pre-K is vital to a child's education, mainly because we start early. We teach them the basics of school. They learn routine. They learn schedule. And then luckily, in Huntsville City, we get to incorporate curriculum, and we get to go ahead and start teaching them those fundamental things that they'll start learning in kindergarten.
I know what A C is.
A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, Z.
Cat and dog go to school.
I'm fine, and I'm smarter than a 5th grader.
Okay, kids are getting spun up. We're also working in our high schools to make sure our kids are on track. And so, this year, Huntsville City Schools introduced twelve assessments, which the state of Alabama will face over the next four years. So, these assessments replace the Alabama High School graduation exam. And they're in the area of math, four components, algebra one, algebra two, geometry, and pre-calculus. U.S. history, English has four components, and then three components of science, chemistry, physics, and biology. The students take these exams on their computers, forty-five minutes, then a ten-minute break, then forty-five minutes, and then they get their results. And that way, we know while they're still in their current grade level, exactly how we did, and what we need to revisit, and where we can accelerate them. So, with that, we look at the results. So, this chart shows across the x-axis, the horizontal line there, the scores our children earn. And the score of about the forty-eight there would be equivalent of college-ready. So, that would be somewhere near the twenty-two on the ACT. And that's what we hope our children are going to attain on the ACT. But we don't really have to hope anymore, because with these assessments, we now have a really good prediction that they will. And so, each of those dotted lines is a different high school. And if we pick one, let me pick the lowest one there, that's Huntsville High School, where that crosses that up-down red bar at forty-eight. If we read to the left, it says about twenty-five percent. What that means is, twenty-five percent of the children in that school who took the Algebra II exam still have some work to do to be college-ready. Seventy-five percent are college-ready. So, in our other schools, we have some work to do. So, the old Alabama High School graduation exam told us that most of our kids were ready to go. In fact, we've got a lot of work to do to make sure that their first year of college isn't either where mom and dad get to spend money reteaching math, reteaching literature and literacy, and things we already should have covered in high school. So, these tests are critical to helping us drive instruction forward, make sure that in the classrooms, teachers are actually teaching things of critical skills that your students need to master. So, we've got some work to do. There's some discussion in the press too about these standards. There was folks that were saying, "Well, common core, common isn't so good, right? We want exceptional," or something like that. Well, common doesn't mean level or order. Common means the same across the United States. Children in Alabama will be prepared with the same standards as they are in New York, or Massachusetts, or California, and that's a high standard. Well, these are the kind of things our children need to be able to do on that Algebra II exam. These don't look so low-key. Use the law of sines and cosines, convert between logarithmics and exponential equations. Lots of stuff in here. It's fairly complex. So, this means we're getting them ready, or we'll do these sorts of things. And we've got a lot of work to do. Thanks. What does the results look like? Well, this is the results for an actual student here at this high school. And what we see here is, on the top, there's a blue bar, and the blue bar says ninety-six. And underneath is another bar that I think says sixty-nine. That means that in this school, that student scored better than ninety-six percent of children taking the Algebra II test. Nationally, this child scored better than sixty-nine percent of children taking the Algebra II test. So, this is the difference between internal standards and external standards. Your children are going to compete against the rest of the kids in the country for jollies. And we want to get that sixty-one now. We want that to be a high score. Well, you can look down inside here, in that little pink area under twenty-two, that tells us this child is college-ready. So, this child most likely will not need to remediate for college. They'll get an ACT score that's indicative of that when they take the ACT in another year. And then down there, those green bars tell us how many questions did they get right in those key areas, which I have on that slide we just looked at. And so, that lets us guide instruction and make sure that we're not teaching just the beginning of the textbook, we're teaching all the stuff we need to teach. Thanks. So, while we're working on our teaching faculty, and we're laying the foundation for pre-K, and we're connecting our kids up using digital technology, we still work in buildings. And when we look at our buildings, we've got a lot of work to do there as well. Huntsville sort of grew up from north to south. And many of these buildings are the norm. It's time to replace them. Some of them are fifty, sixty years old. And when you look at them, the way they're laid out is not suitable anymore for educational purposes. And that becomes more true as we grow up to grade level. So, chemistry labs, are they laid out properly? Physics labs, do we have space for career readiness? Could we teach robotics? Is the school the right size for the student body? Is the school efficient for its use? Or are we spending a ton of money on air conditioning, because the air conditioning plant is not very good? So, those are the key questions we're looking at. When we do it, we've got some guiding principles to figure out what to do about it, and the answer is no. These are to recapitalize, right-size, and make sure the schools are in the right place. And right-size and the right place are the keys. So, when we look at our schools on the ground, are they located where the kids can get to them easily? Are they sort of in the center of where all the students come to and enroll in? And are they too big or too small for the number of students who would like to attend that school? When we look at them, we also want to make sure we're using the same recipe. That there's not a distant pivot recipe with more sugar and more chocolate, or more candy, or whatever we like, southwest or southeast. But it's all the same wherever we go. And so, that is the idea of programming. So, this year, we brought in members of the community, members of civic leaders, teachers, principals, students, to discuss programming and what our schools ought to look like. Where should the gym be vis-à-vis the cafeteria? And where should the counselors be with regard to the principal? And how bad, how big should a classroom be in high school? And what programs do we want in our high schools? And we all agree on that recipe. Now, we take that recipe, and we get assigned whether we're making a square cake, three-layer cake, one-layer cake, or whatever. But it's going to be the same recipe. Enrollment, that's key. If we're going to right-size our school system and our schools, we've got to know how many kids are going to go to those schools. I mentioned a moment ago that, and today's gone by, we had thirty-six thousand students in the school system. Today, we've got twenty-four thousand. People just aren't having babies as many as they used to. And many folks in this town aren't having babies at all, because they're a little old. Enrollment and facility planning. Enrollment and facility planning. This is the business of lining all these things up, so it all makes sense. The number of students, what's inside the school, how the school looks. So, when we do that, first, we have to develop enrollment and facility plan. And we brought in a lot of consultants to help us do that, because it's pretty complex work. And they look at Huntsville, and they give the city planners, and they decide to focus on what areas of the town have yet to be built out? When are they likely to be built out? What kind of homes, or multifamily homes, are going to go in there? And what's the price point going to be? And the folks that are likely to move in there, are they likely to have kids? Are they likely to be beyond those years when they're having kids? And how many kids are they likely to have? Those are all the questions that are supposed to answer for us. While we're doing that, we want to get a good alignment. We want a child to now in elementary school, which high school am I going to go to? Which team should I root for? Which school I'll ask our community and team spirit for? And so, that's an important question. We can't trace that path from any of our students today. So, as we move forward, we want to build a path we can trace. And as we right-size and match likely enrollments, we want to do it in a way where kids can still walk to those elementary schools. Having local elementary schools is a pretty good thing for keeping parents connected and building community support. So, our focus is on making sure the elementary schools are in the right place, and telling owners that they're okay. But really, spending our money on those secondary schools, because of education. Elementary is really aren't that complex. Classrooms, cafeteria, offices, some sort of library, and that's the game. But high schools are really complex. Gymnasiums, theaters, chemistry, physics, career readiness, counselors, all sorts of things. And they need to be the right size and in the right place. So, here's what the monitors have told us. When we look at the map on the left, we can see population growth from 2011, looking forward about five years. And areas of high growth would be to the west, and that's basically it. When we look to how many students we're going to see coming into our schools, that's the map on the right. And there, we're seeing a little bit more growth in a couple other places. To the west, there in the red circle. To the northwest, in the red circle. And to the southeast, in the red circle. Other than that, we're not anticipating much enrollment growth at all. When we look at North Huntsville, we see to the left there, a little bit of growth over in the Providence area, and a little bit of growth right in the Portsmouth shipment area, and then down in the Williamsville area. But here in the center of the city, the south of the city, and the north of the city, we do not see much enrollment growth. Well, that's important news, because we have a lot of square footage in a lot of those places, and a lot of it may not be needed. This picture tells us of the growth we get, how many will come from multifamily homes? How many kids will come from single-family homes? And how many kids will those homes produce? And what we're finding is, it's about twenty kids per hundred homes. So, that's not a lot of new children coming into the system. And that's up there in the blue. The blues and the light blues are those twenty kids per hundred home situations. So, when we look back over the last period of time, we can see enrollment, a burst, excuse me, burst here in Huntsville at a fairly level. While the city grew, the number of children being born here in Huntsville Hospital and across from other places really hasn't increased at all. And it's recovered there around two thousand, twenty-two hundred a year. And when we look at the enrollments that have come over that period of time, those have been pretty volatile, somewhere from twenty-two thousand to twenty-three thousand over that period of time. So, pretty steady. And then looking forward, we see that we're likely to get to about twenty-five thousand students in ten years. So, that's thirteen hundred more than we have today. Thirteen hundred more, but we still have space for about thirty-six thousand, thirty-two thousand, something like that. When we look school by school, and I've kind of indicated here in arrows underneath the school names, which ones would feed into this part of our town. This is how many new students we can see in those schools over the next ten years. So, if we look out to Davis Hills, maybe another twenty students in ten years. And if we look over to the right to our high schools, Johnson High School, maybe another fifteen students over the next twenty years. That's not a lot of growth. And even where it looks like there's a lot of growth, Whitesburg and Williams, we're talking an additional seventy D students over the next ten years. So, that says, we probably have about the enrollments we're going to have for the foreseeable future. Not likely to change if some gigantic business came to town, but that would likely lead to growth in a certain part of town. And we'd have to account for that when it happened. So, given that information, we've got some priorities. We want to make sure our schools are right-sized, they're in the right place. And as we do that, we've got some schools that are very important to our system. ASFL, AAA, two elementary schools. We want to make sure they're in the right place, and that they're in a condition to continue to grow. Right now, AAA has a backlog of about thousand students, and it can't grow in its existing facility. Right now, the ASFL is about at capacity. And the program aligns up Columbia, its students can't go to unless they have the Columbia's footprint. So, we need to make sure that things that were put in place in nineteen eighty-four, as the city's changed, and enrollments have changed, and our towns have changed, that they're still working as they should for us in the present and into the future. So, we've got a very ambitious plan, and thanks to our mayor and our city, and our city fathers and council, we're in position to execute it. We envision a hundred ninety-four million dollars of construction. While we have about twenty percent of our students here in Huntsville, we anticipate spending forty percent of this money on the schools in Huntsville. And that's because those schools are the old schools, and most in need of updates and replacement. With this money, by 2016, we plan to build two new high schools, one freshman academy, one junior high school, one P-8 school, and two elementary schools. And when we're done, we will take one, one point eight man square feet, and we have about four point two man square feet of space. We'll take one point eight man square footage and replace it with, those are old schools, and replace that square footage with one point one man square feet of new schools. So, if those are good in math, that means we're getting rid of seven hundred thousand square feet. And that square footage that we're needing, security, cleaning, air conditioning, that we don't need. Once we're done, we'll be able to relocate twenty-seven percent of our students into new schools. And now, either alleviate a problem when schools are too big or in the wrong place, or in some cases, schools that are currently overcrowded. With that twenty, with that seven hundred thousand square feet that we eliminate, that's twenty percent of our system right there. That twenty percent of the money we spend on our buildings today is wasted, because we don't need that space. And that space we're going to eliminate has an average age of forty-eight years. And when we bring on the new square footage, that age is going to, across the entire system, go from forty-three years down to twenty-four years in age. And achieve a savings for us of about five million dollars a year, because we're not going to need any space we don't need. Now, since 2011, we've already begun consolidating schools. We've done it the way a lot of folks didn't notice, because we don't like to disrupt communities and upset children's attention. So, we've already consolidated Chatham Elementary Middle. We've already consolidated Mount Meapp, Whitesburg, Providence Middle, Williams, and we've closed the Homebound School. So, great deals already been accomplished. We've gone from somewhere around forty-six schools now down to about forty-two. When we look at the number of children in our city, as we think about, could children come back from private school or parochial school? Well, that's an important question, so we actually know the answer. We surveyed all the schools in our area, and we asked them, "Where are your students from? What grade are they in?" And what we find is, ninety-two percent of children in Huntsville attend Huntsville City Schools. And those that don't, if they came back to our school system, you could see we'd add another one point one if they came back in the Columbia year pattern area. If they came back in the Johnson year pattern area, we'd add about half a percent. So, not a lot of kids could come back to our schools and occupy that space that's currently empty. And we're doing pretty darn good, because our kids are in our public schools. Now, turning more openly, looking at Johnson and its theater pattern schools, the students in it were white, occupied a building that's quite old. And when it was built, it was pretty darn good and awful. And by nineteen seventy-four, it had about twelve hundred students. Today, it has four hundred and sixty. That's about a third of what that building will hold. So, we're heating two-thirds of the space for children that don't exist, who don't need to be in that school, because they will never be in that school. And that money could have been better spent on children's education. And you can see, what we've highlighted here is, the purple star is where Johnson High School currently is located relative to the students that attend Davis Hills. And those students are all those white dots. And the red star is a location that we think might be more central for those students. Thanks. This is our other students. I said Davis Hills, let me remember, is that white? This is Davis Hills students. And you can see where the current Johnson High School is located, and this is the very top there, all those dots. There's no, there are very few children, if any, north of there. And Davis Hills is west-south. And so, the proposed location we're looking at for a better location to support the students in this area would be where the red star is. And again, when Davis Hills was in operation, in its heyday, it had seventeen hundred students. Today, there are three hundred ninety-six. So, a big change, and one we need to take account of. And finally, Johnson High School. So, Johnson here, these are all Johnson students, the white dots. Johnson's the purple star, and the red star would be a location that's more central for its students. When Johnson was in its heyday, nineteen seventy-four, it had two thousand eighty-eight students. Today, five hundred eighty. Well, a building that has changed, a building population that's changed that much is important for a variety of reasons. One, we're spending a lot of money on heating space we don't need. But two, for five hundred eighty students, we've got about a quarter of the number of students this school, the quarter number of adults this school was built for. And the reason I say adults is, we get adults in relationship to how many children. So, two thousand students probably would have led to a teacher population that was about one-twenty of that, that was a hundred to a hundred and twenty teachers. Today, we've got five hundred eighty students, and the teacher population is somewhere around a one-twenty of that. Well, those teachers can't supervise all this space traffic. And it leads to problems with discipline, and it leads the superintendent to be pretty worried about student safety. And so, in my mind, a right-sizeing these schools is of critical importance for supervision and safety. Here, I've given you a little overview. So, the purple star is the current school location. The yellow star is the piece of land we have where I am. The white dots are Johnson's students. The red circle is students within two miles. And you can see, that two-mile circle extends over a lot of land where there's no kids. And if we move south a mile, now the yellow circle extends over areas where mostly we have kids. And that would greatly improve the ability of students to get to school and put the school in more of a central location. There on the right, we're highlighting where the school is today in pink. Rolling Hills is just south, and then the proposed site is just south of that. So, about a mile south here on Pulaski between Stringfield and Winchester. The piece of land looks like this, it's fifty-five acres, plus or minus, we're still getting a survey. And it would be, the students would enter, and then folks would enter their campus from Pulaski Pike, there on the left. And the way the schools might lay down on it. This is one artist rendering of how the schools might lay down. So, seventh and eighth grade and junior high adjacent to the high school. And the high school will contain a ninth-grade academy. And we're having great success with our ninth-grade academies. The number of players in our ninth-grade academies is down pretty significantly compared to last year's ninth-grade academies. Another rendering would be on Plan B. And here, the two grade-level groups would be separate. And then finally, Plan C. And what this does for us is, in Alabama and most states, grade seven through twelve is a secondary certification for our teachers. So, our teachers are certified, teach grade seven through twelve. And our elementary teachers teach grade six and below. Well, with seventh and eighth grader close to the high school, this would allow us more flexibility to bring programs into the junior high, and quite frankly, into high school too, because... school too, because our teachers would be able to cover a wider grade span. So this would help with laying the foundation, which is our preparatory courses for AP into high schools. It would help with Project Leaderway and bringing engineers, engineering into the middle school, uh, the middle year program. And, uh, it helps build a common culture. So we want our students that enter Johnson all to have a common frame of mind about, what is this school about? What's my role in this school? How am I gonna act on it here? What is my goal? And we wanna create that culture, um, as a cohesive element and not break it up just because it was convenient for the adults to divide things up, elementary, middle, and high. This'll also allow the extracurriculars to build rapport with the middle school for the, uh, the seventh and eighth grade. It'll build this team spirit, so we can envision across our system, coaches are always coming to me saying, I'd love to have more to say about how that middle school's preparing those football players, or that band, or that choir group. Or here, that'd be much easier to do. So students would be better positioned to dominate those extracurricular activities as well as the academic activities. What would be in the new school? Well, some of our newest career academies. So we're looking at industrial robotics, and that's with an idea in mind, a pretty, pretty close work here. We've got a factory full of robots that need to be maintained. Those are good paying jobs. This campus, through the work of our city council and our mayor, would be transitioned from a school system used to an academy for the National Guard, uh, as well as police and fire academy for training our local police and fire departments. Well, for that reason, we see a natural alignment between our, our new high school and this campus, so the students who command the police and fire departments for the high school diploma would be able to get some experience with the training academies that would be here. Project Leaderway, that's an engineering academy, which would be bringing in Johnson for the focus on preparing students to work in the high-tech industries here in Huntsville. Aesthetics and spa management's a fancy way of upgrading from barbory and cosmetology to careers that have much bigger tips and better salaries. And then finally, business, business management to prepare folks to lead businesses here in our town. So to expand on all this, I've mentioned a couple times now, a program called Laying the Foundation. The purpose of that is to help students prepare for AP courses in high school. And the reason AP or advanced placement courses are important is, A, it's got more workers, it prepares your children better for career and college readiness. Uh, two, if they get a three, four, or five on their AP exams, that's a course they don't have to take in college, which mom and dad don't have to pay for, which is a good thing. So how do we get them ready for that? Well, we get them ready earlier, just like we do in pre-K, getting kids ready early. And we'll do that in seventh and eighth grade with Laying the Foundation, which our teachers are all already trained for. Uh, STEM programs, we're gonna continue to advance STEM. Science, technology, engineering, math are key components of, of being career-ready in Huntsville, and we wanna make sure students across our system are ready. And then finally, we're pushing STEM down into elementary schools. The first time children see those components, science, technology, engineering, math, should be when they get to middle or high school. What kind of results are we seeing here? Well, AP enrollments are up. So when we look at enrollment stats on the left, the red bar is two years ago, yellow bar a year ago, and then the green bar is this year. When we look at exams taken, we're seeing increased exam taking, and we're gonna be looking at that here in the coming week because we have exams on going. And then qualifying schools, so those three, four, and fives, the number of students attending that is going up as well. And to help with that, here at Johnson, and we've also just added Butler High School, are part of the A-plus college ready program. When a student gets a three, four, or five, the student gets a check. When the student gets a three, four, or five, the teacher gets a check. Plus we get training. So that is all pretty good. Graduation rates. We've seen our graduation rate, year over year, go from sixty-six percent to seventy-seven percent. We've got a lot of work to do. We need to get graduation rate up in several of our schools, uh, in the eighties, nineties, and the hundred percent range. And so to do that, uh, I have, uh, conducted a search that's yielded, uh, a principal and a team to come into Johnson Hus- Johnson High School in the coming year. They'll be coming here in July. Uh, that principal and team in our high school in, uh, Tennessee, they have about seven hundred students, about ninety percent poverty, uh, free and reduced rate is about ninety percent. And they moved that school from a fifty-nine percent graduation rate in four years to ninety-one percent graduation rate. And so they visited this weekend, uh, it was my pleasure to tour them of the school. Barbara Coop and I were here, I have a long, uh, road call, and, uh, they're ready to come and, and take Johnson into its new future. So we've also got other efforts ongoing to make sure our schools are working for our kids. We've got some schools that have become known as failing schools, persistent failing schools. One of those was Westlon Hill Street. Uh, and the only thing we need for this position, their homework assignment to all the superintendent candidates was, what, what can we do to improve education at Westlon? And, uh, one of the questions is to be found here today. Westlon students are moving in around eighteen to two, eighteen months to two years of progress in a year. And this graphic shows you, um, here on the, uh, the horizontal axis from left to right, we've got how fast are students growing? And further right is good. The right at that middle bar there means growing more than a year in a year and a lot more than a year in a year. Uh, up and down is what's their achievement? What percentage of students are proficient in grateful? And now we want the kids to learn. So last year, Westlon was at orange hexagon, and this year that, that, they are at the blue boulder with the arrow pointing at it. So they've moved a great deal in only a part of a year, and this beta is about three months old. And that's in math, and here's Westlon reading. So we know all our children can learn at Westlon, they are. A great deal's been achieved in, in a short period of time. Now, we did it through some pretty, um, significant efforts. We have new school leadership. We replaced the vast majority of the adults in that school and brought in adults who believe every child can learn and are willing to do what it takes to make sure that they do. We're looking to extend that, that approach to all of our schools that aren't delivering for our children. And we'll be doing that here in Johnson. Now, kids can't be ready to learn if they don't have the image that they need to take on the, that they have learned here. And, uh, last year, uh, when we, two years ago when I arrived, I looked at the breakfast participation rates in our schools and found that, uh, not surprising, only about a third of our kids were eating breakfast. And the reason only a third eating is schools were built for lunch. Back when these buildings were built, we did three feedings at lunch and nobody served breakfast. So the design, the design here doesn't support a one feeding of breakfast, and it's hard to get kids to come in early to eat breakfast. So rather than moving the kids to the food and cafeteria, we now move the food to the kids in the classroom and feed them all. So we've gone from three schools to thirteen schools having breakfast in the classroom, and participation rates, in other words, kids eating breakfast, has gone from about thirty or forty percent up into ninety percent. That's reduced tardies, it's reduced the number of trips to the nurse if students were hungry, and it's increased students readiness to learn. Uh, we're gonna continue to expand that program into our middle and high school.
Breakfast in the classroom is a problem that started with Dr. Louise back in the spring of this past year. It initially started in two schools and has since expanded to fourteen schools. National studies have shown that students who eat breakfast tend to have higher test scores, are less troublesome problems, and less discipline issues. And we're starting to see developments some days on the region.
We are starting to see the children get into the academics the way that we want them to.
But if you don't eat breakfast, you can't make good grades in the day, you get Fs.
They even will get here early and say, we didn't miss breakfast today.
If you don't eat breakfast, you probably fall asleep in class and get in trouble.
Cause I know how to do my work best without stopping in the middle of class day and my stomach.
Because they do say breakfast is the most important meal in the day.
But they are just genuinely happier to be out in the school. Uh, they look forward to having that breakfast in the morning.
To build on that program and to recognize the simple fact that even while our children learn in school, they need breakfast and lunch and dinner, and they may not always have a chance to get that when school's down session, we're bringing online for the first time in Huntsville, a summer feeding program. So at twelve different schools, we'll be offering a program where they can have breakfast and lunch, and then at two schools, um, dinner. And the dinners are situated so that they're central to where they can get breakfast and lunch. And so any child eighteen and under, whether they go to our schools, a parochial school, private school, can come into our schools in the summer. And this goes on in, uh, June and July and have a free meal. And a developed companies out can have a meal too, and lunch and, and dinner costs four dollars for the developed, so at least two fifty for breakfast. Now, this program's been around since nineteen sixty-eight and is paid for by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Uh, so it's high time we, we make sure all our kids have what they need during the summer so they're ready for school start in August. So, things we're doing to improve our schools. These are just some of the highlights of things that have begun in the last two years. I spoke about pre-K, and we've added twenty-three pre-K to that classroom so that we now have thirty-three. We're creating freshman academies, and the academies we have are seeing a lot better performances through, in terms of student, uh, succeeding in class and not failing. It's critical that students not fail freshman year because if they fail, one F is very likely to lead to a dropout. So the freshman academies are, are critical to making sure our students succeed in high school. And we'll be adding a freshman academy to Johnson that are coming in. Uh, we provide every student with educational technology so they're as connected to their curriculum, and they can have the expertise they need to go on in the business and into college. We began turning around two failing schools, Westlon and Dawson. Uh, we secured nine million dollars with the grants to do that. So that's nine million dollars of new resources over the next three years to turn those schools around. We've strengthened teacher review and teacher hiring to make sure we've got excellent teachers in our classrooms. We've begun some, some learning labs to make sure our teachers have the professional development they need to run. We've begun a partnership with Teacher for America, which is approximately half the faculty at Westlon now, which, uh, those, those new teachers are doing a great job helping provide an excellent education in that school. We've implemented system-wide assessments every nine weeks, so we know where your children are all year long, and we know that we need to do something, and we know when your children can speed up. Uh, we're implementing the quality core curriculum, talked about that just a little bit ago. The state of Alabama will be doing that over the next forty years. And we've been enrolled Johnson and Butler High Schools in A-plus college ready to make sure students here have access to AP courses and the rigor that comes with it. And finally, we've got a capital strategy to make sure we can replace our older schools with great new learning facilities matched to the needs of the community. And we've added some key feeding programs and other resources to make sure our students are ready to begin learning at the start of day and that they don't lose ground over the summer. All right. So thank you for your attention. Uh, I think somebody's collected cards that we have questions on.
If you have the cards, go on about the whole lesson and to get it started, or if you have some questions. We want to start with those while we collect some more.
All right. So why is the reason that Johnson's not being built on the current location? I think I've covered that, but the key considerations are, um, where would be the best location for students? And when we look at where the students are and where they live, this is not the best location. This is about as far away, uh, while still being near the students that you could get from being in the center of where the students are. And so we wanna make sure the school is conveniently located, and because the city is undertaking to repurpose this facility, we can make sure we don't leave a gap behind when we move to a new facility. That's gonna be a rare point in time when we can achieve that feat. As you may know, when you walk, when you wander around town, you'll see Stone Middle School and other schools who are still looking for buyers. Well, we're able to provide a buyer today for this facility as we provide a new facility in the right place for children for tomorrow. For the high school, ninth grade academy and middle school on the proposed new campus Howard will be managed. So we envisioned two leadership teams, one for the junior high, seventh and eighth grade, and one for the high school. And the high school administration will likely have purview of the entire campus as well. And they have the idea is to create an alignment, so as those kids know from one building to the other, when they go from eighth grade to ninth grade, it's a seamless transition and they don't fall through any cracks. Right now, when you look at the world, middle years instruction, the high school, it's a pretty big difference. You go from more or less pretty law control to a world in which you're expected as a young adult to be in charge of the activities during that day, and if you're not ready for that, you'll fall through a crack. So we wanna make sure that doesn't happen, and we've got a good alignment. What is the plan for the current high school faculty, facility once the new school's been completed? So I spoke about that a moment ago. Uh, the city of Huntsville is looking to acquire the existing campus and repurpose it for a training facility for the National Guard, the Fire Department, and the Police Department. And so they'll continue to contribute to this part of town. In fact, they'll probably bring a lot of economic activity to this part of town. Uh, that would be great for, uh, for folks', um, businesses, and great for students as they are able to come back here and participate in that police and fire again. Let's see. Has a traffic study been done to prevent the same issue that we had with traffic turning the drop off and pickup times? Yes, uh, we're currently studying, we, we studied several pieces of land, and we undertook traffic studies at the cursory ones at a variety of, and I spoke to this traffic study, the one we're looking at most closely. And we're also looking at air quality, water, uh, soil, and a whole host of other factors that go into making a slight site selection. What's being done to improve academics at the schools in Huntsville? So that was sort of that list of things that I just covered. And it's a pretty comprehensive, so it's everything from teachers, to the leadership, to the technology, to the facilities, to the nutrition programs, uh, to how we measure student success along the way during the year. And so there's a lot going on. Well, Johnson High School, we restarted it similar to Westlon in twenty thirteen. Uh, we're looking to make some pretty substantial changes at Johnson High School. Um, I'm not happy with the graduation rates. I think the students here can do much, much better, and the adults need to, to be in a position to, um, prepare them for that. We need to advance the rigor, more advanced placement courses, more engineering, uh, things that lead to new jobs. And so we've got a lot of work to do at several other high schools, and this is one of them. Well, the smaller building also mean watered down academic office. Well, no, actually, it'll mean better academic office. So we're spending a lot of money on things we don't need, like space. We can take that money and repurpose it into things we do need, like better programs for our kids. And we envision that when we're done, the enrollment of the new high school will be somewhere in the area of a thousand students, and the new one will be somewhere in the area of seven hundred students. So with those sized student bodies, we can offer really great, uh, academic programs and extracurricular programs. And, uh, students in those schools will be in the same position as students in our other high schools with larger enrollments. Okay, I think this question says, why not put better teachers in Johnson? Uh, if, if you know that's what you need to do. Well, here's how staffing works. In Alabama, every employee for the school system except for the chief financial officer and the superintendent gain tenure after three years. So our cooks, our mechanics, our custodians, everybody's got tenure. And so that creates a, a situation in which, if folks aren't performing as we desire, it takes a fairly exhaustive amount of work to remove them from the position. Now, while I've been superintendent, we've removed a lot of folks. Uh, we did a lot of work at Westlon, and we're getting ready to do a lot of work elsewhere. And in the old days, education was all about compliance. Did we obey the rules? That's not gonna work anymore. Education's gotta be about performance, just like the businesses you work in. If your business is not performing, it's gonna go bankrupt and it's gonna go away. Well, education needs to perform for our kids, and so that's part of the reason for all the assessments, all the technology, is we now have a much better idea of how we're performing, and classrooms that aren't, we're gonna work to make changes. Will we go back to going to school in your district, Tom? Uh, this says students go out of district. As we, as we move from being a dual school system to a unitary school system, a lot of things we're doing today won't carry into the future. So the mayor with the transfer students that move across our town, uh, once we're a unitary status, that will become illegal. The only reason it's allowed today is because of the dual status of the school system. So that would be something we wanna make sure that all of our students have great schools to go to, because that option, train, transferring, need to go away, and they need to be able to have an excellent experience in their own area of the city. They shouldn't have to travel now and have to get to one. What's our plan for men and okay? So Martha King Elementary School is one of the schools I mentioned, there'll be two new elementary schools. Martha King will be one of those new elementary schools, uh, in our plan. And, uh, so that will be in. Uh, we have the general drawings underway, and that'll be a school we begin in the coming years. When can we expect these mergers to take place? Um, that's part I can't talk about. So I've told you everything I can about the schools, and so we're in discussion with the U.S. Department of Justice and the, uh, National Labor Security Defense Fund, and the things I can share, I've shared, and the things I can't, I can't. And so the timing of all this is subject to a continuing discussion. Ideally, you can probably get from this discussion, but I think sooner is better, sooner would be better than later. Simply because we're spending a lot of money on buildings that are way oversized for our kids. That makes it difficult to supervise. Those children in buildings where we're heating a lot of space when we could have been educating instead. And those facilities aren't in very good shape and are under low maintenance. So sooner is better than later, my answer. Very concerned about future use of land. I'm assuming we're talking about this school. And so we work closely with Mayor Battle and the city government to make sure this land doesn't lie out but is used for community purposes after we're gone. Have been told the city schools will be rezoned. What impact will this have on the plan? Well, there's some specifics that I can't go into, but in shaping a plan for the future, we want to make sure that the students currently go to a pattern of schools, that we wouldn't move them across town and do that. So if a student currently comes into this high school, our plan would be they continue to come to this high school. If they're going to go to Columbia, they'd go to Columbia. So the zoning people may have in mind is not all that significant. And that's probably all I can say on that. Let's see. If this new structure for the middle school and high school is so excellent, why not Grissom too? That's another street for you, a question, and it has a street for the answer. As the city moves, as you look around in North Huntsville, the elementary schools are in one place and the middle schools are in another place. As you go west and you go south, the middle schools and elementary schools are actually banged up against each other. And they may be actually joined in many places. Those buildings, the way those buildings are laid out, lend themselves to a P8 structure. Since we can work from white paper, a whole new design with these schools, we can do a design that actually lines up better with the way our facilities operate. Seventh through twelve is a secondary certificate for our teachers. We don't add an elementary grade in the middle of that, requiring teachers to come with those expertise in that building and not have any students. When we have that situation, our teachers spend a lot of time driving around town. So we have a happy in the here, a happy in the there. And that wastes time, wastes money. And what we'd rather have is the alignment so that seventh through twelve, which is all about the secondary experience of being together and the elementary years being together. And so, just so happens when people were building schools in the fifties and sixties, here in North Huntsville, the elementaries are by themselves and the middles are somewhere else. So it lends itself to the design as seventh through twelve. In the sound, it's pre-K through eight and then ninth through twelve. And since Grissom has supporting middle schools already, we don't have money to replace them. We can spend the money replacing them, or we can spend the money where it needs to be spent in North Huntsville, replacing really old schools with the right source schools and new schools. There'll be an existing, how many P8s will there be? We have an existing P8 school that will be replaced. It was also built in the fifties, and so it feeds into Grissom, and that's Whitesburg. That's it. So I thank you very much for coming tonight. Really appreciate any engagement. Please stay engaged with us and we'll be in the future.